May 2nd, 2016, 7:00 PM in the Council's chamber to order. Please rise for an invocation by Pastor Vernon Curry, Highland Drive Church of Christ.
Let's pray. Our Father and our God in heaven, we're so thankful to be citizens of the United States and thankful to live here. We're thankful for the council that will give their time and energy and their wisdom to make the decisions that are best for the town of Papa Bluff. We pray, Father, that you will bless each one of them, bless all that appear before the council tonight, that they will have wisdom, that they will be able to say the things that are best for their position. We pray, Father, that you would watch over us. We all know family or friends that are ill, and we pray that you would bless them and give them the health that they need. Thank you for letting us live in the United States of America and for your blessings of it. We pray that you will continue to bless us. Help us to all be faithful to you in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Here.
Councilwoman Horton.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Here.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Here.
Thank you. Disclosure of interest, any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict or ventures dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none. Citizens input, each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda.
Well, it's pancake breakfast time at the airport. So I'd just like to stop by and invite everyone to come out to the airport this Saturday at 7:00 PM, or 7:00 AM.[128.81][128.81](Laughter). If they're not coming at 7:00 PM, we'd have to cook something else. And I promise I won't be cooking, you know, so nobody has to worry about that. But with something that we like to do every year and hopefully, well, last year it stormed really bad, and hopefully this year it'll be sunshining. So please come out, have some pancakes, and let me show you around the airport if you've got time. I think that we're really proud of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Crissman, 464 North Main. Just one really easy question tonight, but we had a recent council election and several of us went on the subject, or ran on the subject of transparency. And I'm just wondering, we have a lot of items on the agenda tonight that I don't feel very informed on, and I, you know, I don't know how I'm supposed to be informed. So I guess the question really is, when will the packet, the councilman's packet, or something similar to that, that gives some backup information on what's going to happen at council meetings? When will that be online?
Well, I know our new webpage comes out on the 5th, Thursday?
This Thursday.
Thursday of this week?
And it's whatever you all want me to put on there. I mean, this is your packet, so that's council's decision.
What kind of things are you looking to be on it?
Well, I'd like to, all of the backup information for the ordinances that are being passed. It would be nice if the checks written were online. Couple of things there.
Yeah, all the things that are to be voted on tonight, we had a workshop session and discussed everything on them, you know, prior to this meeting.
Well, yeah, I think it informs the public better if it's where everybody can see it, not having to attend a council meeting.
We've got them on TV.
I was able to pick it up tonight.
Well, we had to have them on, you know, the discussion was on TV and it's on YouTube, and it's gonna be directly on YouTube on my site.
I'm not looking for, you know, I'm not looking for excuses or reasons, I'm just saying, you know, I'd like to see it online. Is that unreasonable?
I always have to discuss that, I guess.
Is that something that other cities that you know of, Pam, do?
I can check and see, most of them don't put all the information out there.
Great.
Is it reasonable to get the checks that have been written? Is that a reasonable request?
The bill's paid.
Bill's paid.
Whatever the council wants to do.
You can do that by sunshine request at any time.
But why can't it be online that you can get it by sunshine request?
I don't know. When I wanted them, I just did a sunshine request.
I'd rather have it online.
I guess we can see maybe what other cities.
I thought part of the deal with the website was to cut down some of the sunshine requests, but I'm, you know, I'm not sure if we want to put our checkbook on online.
Right. I think we should see what other surrounding, you know, what other cities here in the state do.
Why do we have to follow other cities?
Well, I mean, just to see, based on their guidelines, what they have, if they put their entire packet, if they do, maybe just certain key items that are important to explain.
For your consideration.
We have a workshop coming up at Missouri Municipal League, it'd be a good time to visit with other cities about that, too.
Okay.
I can put it out on my clerk's website, too.
Just to see.
No others? We move on to the workshop required items. Item A, the city council will review a proposed ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and Missouri Department of Natural Resources for 2016 fiscal year historical preservation fund grant money.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is the 2016 grant application. It is the same one we submitted in 2015, and Department of Natural Resources, State Historic Preservation Office denied us on the one last year. So we've refined our application and got more support and reapplied, and they did approve us this time. It is the Garfield Historic District, which consists of three buildings. It would be Whitley School, Pleasant Hill Church, and Rattler's Grocery, all in a confined area there upon Garfield. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have about it. We felt that it was an important area to help preserve, and that's why we submitted it, and we believe we'll be successful as we go into the grant process. Y'all have already heard about this numerous times, but this is what's required for the mayor to sign an agreement with Department of Natural Resources to move forward in the project. Any questions for me? Thank you.
No questions, entertain a motion and second move this to the voting session to be held tonight.
Let's all move.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, city council review of proposed supplemental agreement number two to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, STP Urban Program Agreement Project relative to paving of 11th Street and Thomas Street.
Seems like this has been on the agenda every meeting for the last two months. I received a call from MODOT about a week and a half ago. Sounds like they're gonna cut out their STP funds to the local communities. We have approximately $50,000 left in there, and this agreement lifts that cap of $300 to unlimited. So in case they do, we could go ahead and use that $50,000 on this project rather than lose the $50,000. And that's really all this is. I don't think we want to lose $50,000 of grant money, so.
Does that need to be voted on tonight?
Yes, it does.
If we don't use the $50,000 on this, can we use it on something else?
We could. We've got till 2000, I think she said, 19 to use that $50,000. But it's like she said, on any project of any significance, engineering cost is gonna eat up a lot of that, and there probably wouldn't be enough money in that $50,000 to actually do a project, so.
I think we mostly move it to the voting session tonight.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, city council will discuss possibilities for city hall and police station.
Yes, the reason I put this on here is, most of you know, we've has a feasibility committee. It was done, I think, about a year and a half ago. They've met quite a few different times. A lot of the discussion was where the police department should be located, or where city hall should be located. I really just wanted some direction from the council on how they want to proceed on this. Do they want the committee to stay intact and do further research? Do they want the committee to maybe come back to the council with a formal recommendation? I really just need some guidance on what you all think needs to be done, because we've got two new council members now. Anyway, that's why that's on here. It's not to discuss any specific place or anything like that.
I personally feel the committee's done a good job, and I believe we need more input. I'd feel more comfortable in having more citizen input than just having the council make decisions coming before us.
I'd like to have more input with them, too, but I'd like to expedite the matter.
Yes.
I don't think we can stay here another winter, like you said today, when we're discussing something. Well, I'd like to see two things, basically. One, what is the budget for this? To me, I'm more of a, from my standpoint, it's not a fiscal thing where city hall is, it's what can we afford? It's more of a fiscal thing. The second thing is, what do we really need it for? How much square footage do we actually need? And I think we've already discussed it a little bit, but I would just like to have an outline from them, saying, okay, here's two or three spots. What do y'all think? You know, so give me two or three spots, give me two or three examples, and here's the money that we think we can afford, and let's go from there. But it needs to be, I don't want it to wait out till November.
No, and I don't either.
I agree, it's gonna be.
I think it's something that needs to be done fairly soon, so.
And if not, if we can't figure out something for this year, is there a temporary solution for us until we figure it out? Because I don't think this place can hold us very much longer.
I agree. I know David went to some of those feasibility meetings, and a lot of that stuff that you ask about, you know, it is in a booklet they had out, but if I'm understanding right, the council would like to see maybe that board or spokesperson for the board come up and give that formally to the council, so all the citizens that weren't able to go to that could hear it and see what we're looking at, cost-wise and everything else.
I think they've done a good job on what they've done, but I think they need to compact it and tell us what direction maybe we should go in, you know, give us an idea of it.
Looking for them to come into next council meeting and then disband that committee, but heartfelt thank you for all the work they did do.
I'll agree with that.
Make that happen to the next meeting.
Okay.
Just a discussion only.
That's just discussion only.
Any action? Bill's had any comments on that?
I think I like filling both your ideas together, and I think we need to get it done.
Yeah. I agree, we need to get it done. I question, let's put in a deadline next meeting to disband, because we've got new information, I mean, we're gonna talk about tonight, that needs to be before the committee. I agree, it needs to be expedited, and we need to make decisions. But I don't know about putting a timeline to two weeks from now doing away with the committee, that's pretty quick.
I know that, you know what you're talking about, and that's in that one information packet that they've discussed. And so they're gonna give probably all the different options and everything that's in it.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure we can always call them back if we have to, can't we?
Sure.
Even if it gets disbanded of some sort, to say, hey, guys, we need, meet one more time or whatever if we had to.
Well, and I think.
I guess that's exactly that. I mean, we can make a decision any time, I don't know why we have to say we're disbanding the committee, is what I'm saying.
And I think they could come back at the next meeting, present something to you all, and, you know, y'all may want to direct them to do something else at that point. Maybe you won't need any more information, I don't know, but.
I agree with that. I mean, until we make a decision, I'd like to, there's no reason.
They probably didn't have a timeline of when to give a report to the council, and I think that's an important piece that we're missing, because we weren't getting reports from them, and I'm sure they did an excellent job. I wonder if we knew people would have an access to that booklet you're talking about? That would be helpful in us making our decision, too.
We can get that, too, yes.
Okay. But I am mostly concerned about our employees that are working here. This is a dreadful place, and you would not want any of your family members living under these conditions, and it's gone far too long. So I just, that would be my only urgency, is get them into a temporary or something, because they cannot continue under these conditions.
I agree with that.
If there's nothing further, move on to the action required items. Bill number 7902, city council will take action on an ordinance approving electric avoided energy rate.
Move for first reading, bill number 7902, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second, first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance approving and enacting electric avoided energy rate for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for second reading, in caption only. Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance approving and enacting electric avoided energy rate for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for adoption, 7902. Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments or questions? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7902 is passed. Bill number 7903, city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for an automatic meter reading system.
Move for first reading, bill number 7903, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for an automatic meter reading system for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for second reading, in caption only. Second. 7903.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for an automatic meter reading system for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7903 is passed. Bill number 7904, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the backup wells.
Move for first reading, bill number 7904.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, bill number 7904, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase and installation of backup wells for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for second reading, 7904, in caption only. Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase and installation of backup wells for the Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for adoption of 7905?
04.
04, I'm sorry. Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
No.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7904 is adopted. Bill number 7905, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the installation of distribution lines.
Move for first reading of 7905, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase and installation of water lines related to the SRF Phase III Water Distribution Project.
Move for second reading, bill number 7905, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase and installation of water lines related to the SRF Phase III Water Distribution Project.
Move for adoption of 7905. Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7905 is adopted. Bill number 7906, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the UV Disinfection System Project.
Move for first reading, bill number 7906, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase and installation of an SRF Phase III UV Disinfection System for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for second reading, in caption only. Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the purchase and installation of a SRF Phase III UV Disinfection System for the City of Papa Bluff Municipal Utilities Department.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We all, in our municipal utilities bills, got a little letter that said about bacteria or things like that. Will this system help prevent that?
Yes. Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7906 is adopted. Bill number 7907, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for the Morrison Road Power Transformer.
Move for first reading, 7907, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the emergency purchase of a power transformer for the Morrison Road Substation.
Move for second reading of 7907, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance accepting a bid for the emergency purchase of a power transformer for the Morrison Road Substation.
Move for adoption of 7907. Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7907 is adopted. Bill number 7908, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving change order number one for the Fair Street Bridge Project, STP 5100008.
Move for first reading, bill number 7908, in caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a change order relating to the Fair Street Bridge Project.
Move for second reading, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a change order relating to the Fair Street Bridge Project.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion second to adopt, any questions or comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
No.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7908 is adopted. Bill number 7909, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between the City of Papa Bluff and Missouri Department of Natural Resources for the 2016 fiscal year historical preservation fund grant.
Move for first reading of 7909, caption only.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance approving the 2016 Historical Preservation Fund Grant Agreement for the City of Papa Bluff Garfield Historical District.
Move for second reading, in caption only. Second.
Motion second for second reading, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Richardson?
An ordinance approving the 2016 Historical Preservation Fund Grant Agreement for the Papa Bluff Garfield Historical District.
Move for adoption, 7909. Second.
Motion second for adoption, any comments? Roll call, Mrs. Kirby.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilwoman McVeigh.
Yes.
Councilwoman Horton.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Crocker.
Yes.
And Mayor DeGaris.
Yes.
We have seven yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number 7909 is adopted. Bill number 7910, the city council will take action on an ordinance approving supplemental agreement number two to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, STP Urban agreement number two to the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, STP Urban Program Agreement Project relative to the paving of 11th Street and Thomas Street.
Move for first reading in caption only of 7910.
Second.
Motion second for first reading, all in favor?
Aye.[1562.23]